I would like to call the March Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Due to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure hope we took admission tonight. There's a lot of people here.
I know. Teeming with excitement here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keating makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Quinn makes a second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven of them. Assistant statements?
Mr. President, we had no one request participation as per Board Policy BDDH.
Written communications?
We had no written communications either.
Assistant's update. Military update?
Yes, thank you. As always, we're proud of the partnership and with the installation on behalf of General Martin and Colonel Towns. We have the month of the military child in April and we're welcoming a lot of the partnership that's continued. And we are also still looking for summer hires on the installation. USA jobs and also calling our Human Resources Office at 573-596-2777. So if we have students that are wanting to get some employment experience and make some money this summer, we're still hiring. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a packed house tonight and three different buildings being represented. I wish I would have had a lip sync or something up here to be able to see who has the most spirit, but let's hear from the Wood people. Where are the Wood people? Okay, that's not bad. Not bad. How about Waynesville Career Center? Notice that Mr. Schaffner was leading the way on that one there. There was a small cheer for those in the viewing audience didn't get to see it. How about Williams Early Childhood Center? Well, you have to give them a break. They have a smaller staff, right? So we do have...
They do have a dog.
Yes. They do have a dog, though. You're exactly right. We're happy to have all... Due to last month's weather, we have several buildings being recognized tonight and we appreciate everything that you're doing to help our kids and kids from three years of age all the way up through graduates. So it's a great scene out there tonight. The district will host a bullying prevention session from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, Tuesday, March 26th at Waynesville High School. All parents and students are welcome to attend this session regardless of their child's... or the school their child attends. Waynesville High School Theater and Music Department and Thespian Troop 1669 will present the musical "The 1940's Radio Hour" by Walton Jones at 7:00 p.m. on April 18th through 20th and April 21st at 2:30 p.m. The cost is $5 for elementary students, $6 for middle school and high school students, and $7 for adults. Senior citizens who have our Activities Pass will be admitted for free. I would like to invite you to participate in the opening ceremony for Special Olympics on April 10th at Waynesville High School Tiger Stadium. Special Olympics, we'll be putting out more details as we get closer to the event. Our district will be holding its volunteer banquet at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 11th to all of you who volunteer with our district, from reading to kids to supporting our athletes to helping with snack in the pack. We'd like to say thank you for all you do. I believe we had over 1,200 individuals contribute hours to our district this year. Students will be out of school on April 19th and 22nd, not due to snow, thank goodness. April is the month of the military child. We'll be asking everyone to wear purple on April 24th for Purple Up Day in support of military children. Waynesville R6 will host the first community salute to service at 6:00 p.m. on May 1st. The community is invited to participate in this event that will recognize high school seniors who are joining the military, ROTC, and/or going to Military Academy. Area schools in the South Central Region of Missouri are also invited to attend this event. Fort Leonard Wood commanding General Donna Martin will be the keynote speaker for this event. The Waynesville High School Choir and Band will perform on April 25th before the Springfield Cardinals game. Tickets to single games will go on sale at the end of this month at the Springfield Cardinals site. And graduation remains Friday, May 17th. However, because of our inclement weather days, our last day of school as of right now, I'm still going to leave that in there, as of right now, is Wednesday, May 29th.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Yeah, I'll leave that in there. I've had to hunt Easter eggs in the past in the snow.
That's right. That's right.
Now, I wonder if I can wear like lavender, because I love our military kids and not have to wear purple like some of those folks that live north of us.
I know. I know. Yes, that's a tough one. I've already heard that. Heard that, Mr. Keating. You get it close, it'll count. Okay?
I'd like to just add one comment, Dr. Henry, in regard to the upcoming Board of Election. And that's first Tuesday in April. And we're not... we need people to get out and vote for your school board. We're the second largest business in the county. And it would be nice to have a very nice turnout.
Consent agenda items. Bid recommendations. Dr. Berger?
A couple sizable ones on there, Mr. President, but I did want to make note that the security camera equipment for East Elementary, that is Prop 1 funds. So that's only Prop 1 funds.
Financials?
Oh, yes, thank you. Let me see my financials. Sorry, I forgot about that. For sharing documents over here and I neglected. All right, thank you, Mr. President. March 10th, 2019, in the MOSIP account, $46,396,781.40. CDs with Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. In the general account, $3,484,427.97. Payroll account, $337,634.55. Total funds, $60,718,843.92. Sorry, I had trouble spitting that out.
No, that'll be fine. I have a motion to approve A through H on the consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. I have a second. Mr. Dearing, second. It's all in favor, show of hands. Seven of them. Student recognitions. All State Orchestra, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the winter, students from Waynesville High School auditioned for the all-state band, choir, and orchestra. And we did have three students who were selected to participate at that state level. And they performed in January at the Music Educators' Conference at Tantara. First, we have Christian Gervasio, who was selected for all-state orchestra, second chair percussion option one. And he did perform with the all-state orchestra. And Christian was also selected for all-state choir but did not perform with them because he chose to perform with the orchestra. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We had Katie Blau, who was also selected to perform with the all-state choir. And last, LaDarian Hardison was selected for all-state choir.
So she picked up both these. Thank you. All-State Athletics, Mr. Race.
If I could have all of our student athletes and Coach Smith come up, please. I'd like to begin just by saying this feat that each one of these individuals was able to achieve this year is something that is not easy. It is a very difficult task. The sport of wrestling is not the easiest sport in the world. And it takes a lot of sacrifice and a lot of commitment. We would like to honor four of our student athletes here at Waynesville, two from our girls' wrestling program and it's first year in the history of Misha, so the whole state, and then of course, two boys. We have three here. First one is Justice Sealy.
Coach, if you wanted to.
We also have twin sister Jasmine Sealy. We have Michael Cassidy. And unable to be here tonight is Gavin Sax because he is training to go to a folk-style national tournament currently.
I'd say give him another round of applause for the orchestra, choir, and the wrestlers. CTA Spotlight on Education, Colonel Williams.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce our two Employees of the Year. If I could have Tim Wallace, if he could break free, come on up here. I know he doesn't want to come up here. Tim Wallace is a WCC Certified Employee of the Year. Tim is the consummate team player. And he always goes above and beyond for his students, his colleagues. And he runs when this sound doesn't work properly. The school district and our community. Tim works tirelessly as a classroom teacher and he always focused on his students and being the best teacher he can be. But then Tim has virtually a second job, providing video support and coverage for a wide variety of school events and community events. Sporting events, city council meetings, board meetings, and soon graduation, and the list goes on. It seems like just about every day and night Tim is working somewhere in the community to support our district and the community. Tim's good nature, caring attitude, and sense of humor makes him a pleasure to work with. I'm serious. Tim's sense of humor plays a big role in making WCC the best place to work in our school district. Most all of the time, Tim likes to work behind the scenes and he would probably prefer not to be up here tonight standing in front. He said, "Please say the absolute minimum." But tonight, the spotlight should be on you, Tim, because you're the kind of teacher and person we should all strive to be like. Next is Ms. Corinne Zeca. Corinne is the WCC Classified Employee of the Year. Ms. Zeca is probably the hardest working person in WCC. She is everywhere, every day, and always on the move. There is no part of WCC Corinne does not touch. Corinne was selected because of her good attitude, caring nature, and willingness to accept any duty assigned. Corinne is always willing to help when you ask and she does everything for everyone in WCC. Corinne wears many, many hats. Her experience as a classroom teacher has helped her build rapport with many students who need that extra bit of encouragement to be successful. She is a wonderful addition to our WCC staff. She's a go-getter who's willing to help out wherever there's a need. Corinne volunteers to help everyone and she is utilized in a variety of ways, to say the least, to help WCC run smoothly every day. She is understanding and flexible. Corinne and her family will be moving to Vincenza, Italy this summer, and we will all miss her. She will not be easy to replace.
Thank you guys very much. And I'll say, I've watched Mr. Wallace pack all this equipment out on his back one day all through the brush. And I was like, "You need some help?" And he's like, "Got it." But I had to help anyways. And I think I was more of in the way than help, but he let me and he told me I did good. So, but thank you guys both. You gave great jobs. We appreciate you both. Recognitions for Williams?
Hi. I am from Williams Preschool. And I am excited to introduce Linda Lucritz, who is one of our many paraprofessionals here at Williams. Linda is just plain awesome. She's always happy and greets each student as they come in our doors with a positive comment, usually something silly. She's hardworking and stays late to ensure that all our kids are ready for the next day. She's responsible and always has a smile on her face. She has a great attitude and is fun to work with, and is always giving of her own time to ensure that students that she works with will have an enjoyable school experience when they arrive the next day. She's always positive and a true team player. Thank you, Linda. And Billy Stewart. Come on up. Billy is one of our special educations and new to William's education teachers and new to Williams this year. She's young and energetic and has all kinds of energy and genuinely loves her job. She gets to know each one of her students and builds a great relationship with them. She is creative in how she teaches and approaches each day with a smile on her face. Billy is a positive role model for her students and always has their best interest at heart. She makes learning fun for all students and cares deeply about them. She alters lessons to meet each student at their level. She is kind, creative, energetic, and genuine, the epitome of what a preschool teacher should be.
Thank you both very much. CTA Spotlight on Education continues with Ms. Mitchell.
Okay. It was supposed to be Ms. Huggins tonight, but she went and had a baby. So I'm going to present our certified staff member, who would have been her backup, but we're going to recognize Ms. Jamie Carter tonight as our certified staff member at Jamie is a first grade teacher and has been in this position for seven years at Wood Elementary. Jamie graduated in 2009 from Texas A&amp;M University in College Station, Texas, with her undergraduate degree. She received her master's in 2011 from Armstrong Atlantic State University in Savannah, Georgia. Jamie is from Baytown, Texas. Jamie's hobbies include working on her soaping business, which I benefit from, thank you, cooking, gardening, painting, singing and music, shopping with her best friend, and anything outdoors, and spending time with her daughter and husband. Jamie's favorite memory at Wood Elementary is when she participated in a synchronized swimming talent show skit. She also loves when her students from previous years visit her every morning for hugs before breakfast in class. Jamie's colleagues had lots to say about her. They say she's a really good teacher with lots of dedication for her students. She's helpful and one of the most creative and kind teachers in the building. She's always upbeat and brightens a day with a smile and encouraging word no matter the time of day. She can make you laugh no matter what and brightens every room she enters. She's respectful to all people and always willing to share ideas. Jamie is constantly finding ways to help students love learning and is innovative and committed. She is an engaging teacher who encourages critical thinking. She's helpful to new teachers and willing to help any way she can. She is super accepting and patient with all of her students and a great colleague, friend, and listener. Her room is always welcoming and positive to enter. Jamie is a fun teacher who loves her students past and present, and her students love her. Someone said, "One of my favorite memories of Jamie is when she sang on the homecoming float. What a great voice and so much fun." Mrs. Carter overheard... Oh, someone else said, "Mrs. Carter overheard 'I forgot my lunch' and ordered Jimmy John's and had it delivered as a surprise. She is so sweet." Thank you for all you do for our Wood family, Ms. Carter. Ms. Carter is actually our backup CTA rep, so she's going to introduce our classified.
Okay, so our classified staff member for Wood Elementary is Ms. Amber Millsap. Amber is our principal secretary and has been in this position for one year this June. Amber attends Ozark Technical College, in which she is set to graduate this May. Amber is from Lebanon, Missouri. Amber's hobbies include shopping, watching her son play baseball, and traveling. Amber's favorite memory at Wood Elementary is our Christmas party scavenger hunt and the homecoming parade. Amber has made an outstanding addition to our Wood staff. Amber's colleagues say she is always helpful with everyone's needs, and they love her smile. Amber is kind-hearted and works so hard to learn the many things her job entails while still giving what time she has to everyone. Amber is a wonderful asset to Wood Elementary and has met everything with a head-on attitude despite it being her first year. Amber is always willing to listen. She's understanding, flexible, and caring. She is always willing to find an answer to questions that arise. Her smile lights up the office and she makes everyone's day. Amber always has a positive attitude and a smile on her face, no matter what. Amber is easy to talk to and is patient. She works hard to help students succeed. Someone said, "I am amazed at how awesome you are with words, friend. You beat me every time." I love our conversations about artwork and shopping. Thanks for all you do for our Wood family.
No, she's already went.
All right, now we're good. I've got too much going on here. All right, now we'll go to Staff Recognitions. Third Quarter Project Teach Award, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mike Freeman from Seller Sexton Automobile Dealership, sponsor of the Project Teach Award, will present this quarter's $100 award to Linda Meckham, fifth grade teacher at Partridge Elementary School, for her project called Book Tasting.
Thank you very much, and an honor for me to be here again tonight. Isn't it great to recognize your staff, the people that really make a difference with these kids? Give them all a nice round of applause. And that was a super, super job. Outstanding from the administration down, everybody. Ms. Meckham, she's a teacher at Partridge Elementary School, and I was really enjoyed her project this year of Book Tasting. Book Tasting is an interactive way to get kids attracted to reading and accustomed to a wide variety of genres. When our Book Tasting event is finished, every student comes away with a list of books that they are excited and looking forward to reading, as well as a new book for them to enjoy. The goal is not to hear, "I can't find a book to read. I don't know what to read," when it comes finding just the right book. So to prepare for their Book Tasting, she wanted to purchase six to eight books at varying levels of genres from fourth to sixth grades for a total of 24 books. They also will be purchasing placemats to set at the Book Tasting table for snacks as well as... and snacks for our tasting while we are having the tasting, books, paper plates, paper to print our menus, and so on for all the items that would be needed. They set up the six tables for four people. Each table will be for specific genre, fiction, nonfiction, mystery, et cetera. And each place setting will have a placemat, place plate, book, and menu. Students will be recording their tasting judgments on the menu, and they plan to wear an apron and play some restaurant music as they dine. So it puts just a new perspective to buy your books and send them to school and you eat the pages, right? Exactly right. So doing a great job teaching our kids. And she is being recognized tonight as your third-quarter Teacher of the Quarter for the Waynesville School District. Would you give her a nice round of applause?
Sure. This project is not an original idea. However, knowing the students in my room this year, this is my second-year teaching, fifth-grade students, and it's just a need that we have. I have a lot of students come into my classroom that say, like I wrote in the application, that say they don't have anything to read or they don't know what to read. And so this just presents them with multiple opportunities so they can come away with something that they love.
Excellent.
Mike, I say this every time and I mean it every time. Thank you. Thanks Seller Sexton for us, for everything you guys do for our district. We appreciate you very much.
Glad to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. February Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. February Transportation Employee of the Month goes to Mary Dixon. Mary Dixon is a dependable employee. She's always here. She never complains. She has a cheerful attitude and does whatever is asked of her with a smile on her face. She's always trying to uplift other staff members with her encouraging words. And being the dedicated employee that Mary is, she's out on a trip for us tonight. And so Mr. Wilking is here to accept this on her behalf. So thank you, Mr. Wilking.
Now we'll do March Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. March Transportation Employee of the Month goes to Shane Patterson. Shane's been an employee in the Transportation Department for the past year. Shane takes care of the department's payroll, ordering, and purchases. He also helps with employee absences. He's very professional in how he goes about his everyday job performance. He treats everyone with respect and goes above and beyond. Shane has been instrumental in implementing a new mass text messaging system for our transportation employees, which has really improved communication throughout the department. We just greatly appreciate everything that Shane does for us, and that is why he is this month's Employee of the Month.
Congratulations to both. Diesel Program Recognition, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a rare and an honor to be able to recognize not only a program that's doing an outstanding job, but a program in its first year in our school district. But as recent as last spring, the Board voted to approve a light-duty diesel program for our school district. And we've been very, very fortunate to have Mr. James Rim be in charge of that, to the point that he was in there, I think, in the summer welding stuff and everything else, just trying to get the room ready over the summer. But it's been an outstanding... But it's been an outstanding program for us, and recently, they were selected by, and I want to make sure I get this right here, James, State Emergency Management Agency. In the afternoon light-duty diesel class, was recognized by this organization, the All Hazards Mutual Aid Coordinator Deputy Operations Chief. Think I got that all right? That was from SEMA. For their work on a 2008 Ford F-450 truck, the class replaced engines, belts, hoses, engine belts, hoses, radiator tires, serviced the transmission. The body of the truck was removed from the chassis to perform the work. This truck is used by Missouri One Disaster Medical Assistance Team. They did such an excellent job, they were given a certificate of appreciation, and each student was presented with a challenge coin. And I'm going to go ahead and recognize those students as well for the hard work they did. Maximo Reyes was our project foreman on that. Harry Franco, Seth Miller, and Dominic Crane also took part. So we want to say thank you to Mr. Rem and his afternoon light-duty diesel class, and... Oh! Very good. You're going to come up... Okay, they threw one in on me there, sorry. Very good, Harry. Thank you for being up here. No, you stay up. You're going to be in the picture now, man. Okay, okay. No, but we do want to recognize them. What a great opportunity and great recognition for a first-year program, any program, working light-duty diesel. So congratulations.
This poor guy's stuck between James and I. The shadows aren't...
Now this one. One, two. Excellent.
Congratulations. Great job, guys. Great job. Discussion Items. Proposed 2019-2020 Transportation Handbook, first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed 2019-2020 Transportation Handbook is submitted for the board's review as a first reading. Revisions to the handbook are indicated in red. Please feel free to contact myself or Mr. Wilking with any additional questions or concerns.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay. Winter Sports Report, Mr. Ace.
Mr. Ellie told me to be short and sweet, so I'm going to be sweet because I'm already short, so... So 2018-19 Winter Sports Brief. We'll go over the four things: academics, tiger performance, community outreach and involvement, and competitive success. For academics, you can see that our four sports throughout the winter, you will see a total of the overall average GPA for varsity lettermen and women and all student athletes. That's any student athlete who may have come to one practice, been on the roster for a week, et cetera. We continue to track those kids throughout the year. We do have an average of 3.19 for the winter season and 3.09 overall. Academic All-Conference, we had nine individuals that were all-conference. That is a 3.75 or above, a lot of those being 4.0s. And then we had 12 other individuals that were between a 3.5 and 3.74 that were honorable mention. If you want to take a look, you can briefly look at those names up there and see who those athletes were and are. Then academic support. All of our sports are required to have win time once per week over the winter. It was pretty much Wednesday because that's the only day, really, that we have that we can get everybody in. So that begins at 2:45 PM and ends at 3:30. Currently, we continue to have two teachers that are fulfilling those spots and supporting our student athletes regularly. We had a 9.1 decrease of students with Ds and/or Fs and a 13.61 percent decrease in students with an F over both semesters. So that's from end of September to now. Tiger Performance Training. Currently, we have 72 percent of our student athletes attending TBT, 70 percent or more of the time, and this is since the beginning of the year. We currently have 546 students enrolled in fitness and conditioning for the 2019-20 school Starting tomorrow, we have created or will be creating our development of TBT to incorporate sixth-grade student athletes after school. That will be two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday, until 5:00, 5:15. Weightlifting will actually be over at about 4:30, so if parents would like to pick kids up, they can do so around 4:30. Those kids that are riding the activity bus will then transition into club tiger and/or supervision with our coaches. There will be a lot of questions, I think, with this, and I've already fielded some, but it's focused on movement and agility. A lot of the work that they will be doing is just learning the proper techniques, how to utilize a bar with a PVC pipe, and a lot of body weight exercises. There will be some competitive games that will be involved in that as well. This winter season, we had Warrior Workouts with our 310 Pie Partners. They're at 6:30, so any of the board members that want to get up and come with 6:30 workouts, you're more than welcome to come. Dr. Henry, you're in?
I dropped my daughter off.
All right, you guys are in. So 6:30 AM, we have workouts that we're doing with our 310 Pie Partners. We had, at our last workout, over 90 student athletes and coaches. We had a lot of our coaches attend. The upcoming dates for those are April 11th and May 9th, and they will be held in our main weight room here at the high school. A lot of fun, focused on functional movement, a lot of laughing, giggling, pushing each other. It was just a very joyful time for those kids and broke up the monotony of the weightlifting classes, so... You can see some of the pictures from that morning. I do want to thank Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel, Mr. Will Earl. He did a great job and brought some of his captains along to help. Community Outreach and Involvement. We did have our Tiger Culture Night during the winter season. During that time, we had our Student Government Association organize event to embrace diversity in our community and to show all the positives that we here at Waynesville have to offer. In addition to that, our Special Olympics basketball team was honored and actually competed that afternoon prior to the game and were announced during the game, which was really awesome for those kids. We also had Military Appreciation at one of our games. We honored our 787 Pie Partners. We have had over 100 soldiers in attendance during that time, and each one of them received their free popcorn and soda, and they were loud, and I think our student section and their section were actually competing against each other at one time to see who could be the loudest. So it was a lot of fun having them. Competitive Success. We have athletic awards. We had 19 all-conference student athletes, 12 all-district student athletes, and then tonight, we honored those four all-state student athletes. Those are the names. That is all district. And then those are our four all-state. We did have 10 Tigers signed to go on to the next level during this year. We had four football, one softball, three cheer, and two wrestling. Those are the names of those individuals, along with the pictures on the day they signed. And lastly, this is just an overview of where we stood as far as conference schools. We did finish overall all-sports in fourth, a couple-point swing, and we would have been the other direction, but very, very good. I have some work to do, but I think we did a great job representing Waynesville this And that is it for me.
We're starting the spring off pretty good, too. We had our middle school baseball win the first-ever middle school baseball game. That was good. And then I got a call from a parent from Lebanon, pleased with our track kids, how polite they were, how well that behaved they were, and seen quite a bit of sportsmanship before, so I was very happy to take that phone call today from a Lebanon parent. Professional Development Handbook, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The District Professional Development Committee Handbook for the 2019-2020 school year is presented for a first reading and will be brought back as an action item during the April board meeting. Please contact me with any questions or feedback.
Thank you. Proposed Job Descriptions, first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The attached proposed job descriptions are presented for your review as first reading. The job description of Admin Secretary/Operational/Personnel Services has been revised to accommodate additional duties for the 2019-20 school year, and the job description of Athletic Trainer/Teacher is a new position. The administration will request approval at the regular April meeting of the Board of Education.
All right, thank you. WCC Adult, WSGC Student Handbooks, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Student handbooks for the 2019-2020 school year for the sixth-grade center and Waynesville Career Center adult program are presented for a first reading. Any comments or suggestions will be accepted between now and the regular April meeting, at which time they will be submitted for board action and adoption.
All right, thank you. Move to Action Items. Board Policy GBEBC Revision, way first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. MSBA has revised the reporting section of Policy GBEBC for consistency with the law and to include the district participating in the wrap-back program, which automatically notifies the district when a district employee is arrested for a reportable offense after the district has conducted an initial background check under the program. As discussed in study session, the recommended revision to the policy, procedure, and form are attached for approval at this time, please.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? So moved. Next motion, Dr. Fulmer, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, pass. Proposed 2019-2020 Certified and Classified Handbooks, second reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed 1920 Certificated and Classified Personnel Handbooks were presented last month for the board's review as a first reading. The administration has added language regarding the updated policy for GBEBC and is requesting approval at this time.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Darian, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Student Handbooks, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Student handbooks for Waynesville High School, Waynesville Middle School, Waynesville Career Center, and our elementary buildings for the 2019-2020 school year are presented for a second reading, and administration requests a motion to approve as presented.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Mr. Crowder makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. O'Reilly, second. Show of hands. Ms. Quinn, you... All right. Do I have any nays?
Nay.
All right. Six one, motion carries. Board Policy Update, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Student Discipline Policies are presented for a second reading. Administration requests approval of the discipline policies as presented.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Crowder, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Proposed Job Descriptions, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions to include the new transportation driver, trainer, dispatcher are presented for a second reading. 4.6.1 Transportation Head Mechanic, 4.6.2 Bus Mechanic, 4.6.4 Transportation Driver, Trainer/Dispatcher. Administration requests approval of the above-named job descriptions as presented.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Ms. Quinn makes a motion, I have a second. Dr. Fulmer, seconds. Show of hands in favor. Seven oh, motion carries. Employee Benefits, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have the new health and our ancillary benefit renewal. Speak to it just a few things. Big, big piece of the budget puzzle this is, and we came back at a renewal of 5.3 percent, which is pretty good. It's lower than last year. I've mentioned a couple times that, you know, something closer to 10 might prompt a program change or a benefit plan design change. Something, you know, 1% to 3% probably wasn't realistic. The Met, the Missouri Educators Trust, the 82 schools that wake up that consortium actually outperformed the district. So this was a year where the group carried us. So that's important to remember because there will be years that our cost-toclaims ratio will be lower than the group, and we'll help out. So that's kind of the design of the plan. But 5.3 percent was certainly good. Always want to drive it down as low as you can, but I'll take that, really, in the environment we've been in the last decade. I'd take probably a flat 5% every year. The second thing I wanted to mention on that, to put that in perspective, for every eligible employee, whenever you total all that with all of our benefit increase, that alone is approaching a quarter of a million dollars. So that's not a, you know, benefit that's subsidized by the state, or we're not state employees, that's, you know, just a reportable number. That's money we got to go find, so that's certainly an investment in our eligible employees. And lastly, that's without, you know, no network change, no program change, a good competitive benefit for health. Speaking to dental, dental did change network, and typically, while network can be very important in health, it's important in our ancillary benefits, but we, you know, it's, I guess, less, we weight that less in terms of whether the decision to move a network. The benefit is important, but to put that in perspective, of that 82 school districts in our consortium, there are only two where the district provides that, you know, district-sponsored benefit. Us and Reed Springs of the entire 82 districts in the consortium. With that, the dental vision, excuse me, the dental insurance plan was a pass, so we got no increase on that. The vision was... I need to go back, I'm sorry. No, that's right. The dental insurance was a pass, as was the vision. The exciting part about that is we are locked in at those rates for five years. That was renegotiated this year through our consortium, so that was a really good thing, too. With that summary, I have a motion to approve the district-sponsored health and ancillary benefits, including dental, vision, death, AD&amp;D.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. O'Reilly makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Darian, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Substitute Salary Increase, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration is recommending increasing substitute teacher pay for substitutes with 60 to 119 credit hours by $6 per day and moving substitute paraprofessionals to the same pay category. We feel like this will help increase our fill rates, and it also will make us much more competitive with surrounding districts.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Ms. Quinn makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Darian, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. MSBA Policy and Procedure Update, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a large number of policy updates from last month, and I received no questions or comments regarding these policies. I would note that I know that Mr. Keeling did make a comment on JGR III that was addressed in that last vote there, just to point that out, and saying up two on one of the suspension categories, so that was taken care of in that, in this batch of policies. I didn't receive any other questions, so I would recommend those for approval.
Okay. Any last comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, I have a second. Crowder, second. Show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Closed Session, Closed Record, Closed Vote is allowed by RSMO 610.021. Section Two, Real Estate. Section Three, Hiring, Firing, Discipline, and Promotion of Employees. And Section 13, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. Motion to enter into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. O'Reilly, second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed session.